Hi.
Hello.
Hi, is this next?
Yeah, hi, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good, how are you?
Good. Um, so I can't remember who's the host for this.
Probably Dan.
Dan, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, is Stacy right or?
No, it's Kathy.
Kathy, okay.
I know we all. Look the same after a while. I think my name comes up as Jim Malloy too, so.
Okay, you know, just to throw me off.
Yeah, yes, make it more confusing. So it's recording right now. I can tell Dan that as well. The only thing I was wondering if when I get off, I wonder if it stops the recording. I don't think it does, but I'll just tell Dan to make sure he looks and make sure it says still says it's recording.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So you're actually in the office now?
Yeah, I come in on Tuesdays and work till like seven or so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's nice to get in.
Well, thank, thank you for helping us, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Getting it going.
No problem. I think someone else is joining. Let's see.
Let's do.
Hey.
Hi.
Good, everything's good here.
Yeah, just waiting for. Behind me to do this. Okay.
So Stu, do you want to talk about who moves people in and out? That was the last thing we. That was what we were talking about on.
I guess, I guess Nick, maybe you can have a look at the list and as we talked about, you know, keep track of, you know, who's been on and who hasn't. I mean, do we have a list now? Like, I guess it's probably too early, but.
Um, like, are you wondering if there's any attendees right now?
Yeah.
Um, there is an attendee right now. Yep, there is one person. You, when host is turned over, you can see, um, do you, Stu, do you want to be host right now?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it. Yeah, I'm, I'm not super expert on Zoom and all that, but I did get the tutorial you guys gave us the other day.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, I, you know, I think it's fine. I mean, I don't know how long it takes to bring somebody over, so I guess we'll figure that out as we go.
It'll be fast. You'll get ahead. It's super easy. Um.
Vicky is part of our committee, by the way, Kathy.
Oh, the person in the.
That's Vicky Blyer. She's on our committee.
Hi, Vicky.
Um, yeah, no, there is another person. Stu, can you, you're the host right now. Do you see, if you look under attendee, do you see this one person listed?
I see Erica, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's someone who's in your, like, audience.
Okay.
Erica.
Okay.
What's the last name?
It doesn't say. It just shows Erica.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we promote and demo people by going to those people and going to, do we right-click on them or go to more? There's.
Um.
No more on mine. Am I not?
You're, you're not, actually. I'm sorry, I need to do the host. Stu, you can make Dan the host now if you want.
Or co-host is fine.
Or co-host.
Um, how do I do that?
Um.
Sorry, sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Go to my name and under participants and on the right side, there should be more. If you click on that, one option is make co-host.
Got it.
And, okay, that took.
Okay.
So if we go to an attendee, if we say allowed to talk, they're brought over. Right, or?
Uh, no, we, we click more and then we go to panelists, yeah.
Yes.
And then we put them back and then at the end, we put them back the same way.
Yes.
Okay. Nick, did you, did you get that? Can we have two co-hosts?
Um, so right now, I think it's probably just you and your, Stu is the host, maybe Danielle, the co-host.
Yeah, is it, can you make two co-hosts?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna make, I'm gonna do Nick.
Nick may sometimes have to remove people, so.
Co-hosts. Let's see how it works.
Yep, you just did it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, now I can see the more button.
Okay, perfect.
And, um, it is recording. When I get off, it should continue to record. If you notice, I don't know if you guys are seeing it on the top of your screen. Does it say record?
Yep.
Okay, so if it, if it turns off when I get off, it shouldn't, but if it does, look for the option to record. But again, it should not, and I will send you the recording tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Okay, have a good meeting.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, okay. So now we just wait.
So promote to panelists is how we move people over.
Yeah.
And then once they're promoted, that option will be something like remove from panel or something like that.
So people who join right now can hear our conversation.
This, this is, this is all open and it's being recorded to boot. And, and our recordings have been requested for the last four meetings, so we should, we should not do a Ronald Reagan who assumed that the microphone was off when it wasn't. Not that it hurt him. He got a landslide anyway, but.
We're not the Teflon Committee.
No, we are not. So, Stu, you'll do the first introduction, right?
Yep, and then I'll turn it over to you to make some introductory remarks.
Right.
And then we'll, you know, we'll kind of refresh the rules for, you know, let's talk about suggestions and, you know, and.
Right.
Positive things and bring the first person over and. Go.
All right.
Just as a reminder, Dan, to have everybody raise their hand.
Yes.
At the beginning.
Yeah, so Stu, you'll, you'll mention that, right?
Yeah, I'll make it note of that.
Part of the procedural.
I think it's in the notes anyway.
Yeah, but for, for many people, probably most of the people in the audience, this will be a, a first time in a webinar situation like this. I mean, I've only been in a few on their side, once for town meeting and twice for the select board. So reminders about the mechanics of it will be helpful to people.
Yeah.
We want everybody to, the attendees who intend to speak to raise their hand at the beginning, so they all get queued.
Right. All right, I'm going to, now that I've used my email to log in, I'm gonna get rid of it because I do not want distractions during this. Uh, exit full screen. Let me get rid of my email. So what is this? That's your phone numbers. Uh, this is a browser in case you want to show our, our webpage.
Do we need a quorum?
Uh, we will have a quorum. Three people is a quorum.
Okay. So we have a quorum.
So I think all I'm leaving up on mine is word for my background points, browser, get rid of this. Yeah, I'm just leaving things open in case we want to share anything on the screen. All right, let's make this.
I've got a timer app as well, which I've got.
Oh, good. Okay, well, people are slowly coming in, so we should be able to start at seven and about eight minutes, we can start. I was tempted, just for the change, not to sit in the same chair because, you know, we all see each other in exactly the same room every time, but.
Should change our backgrounds. Rearrange my.
Rearrange just behind you. I use this one.
I'll just give this to Stu.
I use this one because I have a big monitor and a, and I can control the lighting a little more. Uh, so I've just decided I might as well just sit here. Let me do one thing here. Whoa, that wasn't good. That's probably about right. It's making me red. There, use that. All right, so you have a timers too, and we should probably. Use the Doug Lucenti, we've talked about this, the Doug Lucenti pattern of giving people a warning, you know, when they've got 15 or 20 seconds left.
Yeah.
And I think, assuming we have some. Sort of open discussion after people speak, we should also warn people when we're getting close to nine o'clock.
I set it, I set a timer on my phone for nine, so when it buzzes.
Right.
It's over.
We should give people a little heads up when we get close because people may not be.
Yeah.
So far, we have only, I'm looking, only three people, so let's wait a bit. Is this?
That's still 10, it's still seven minutes too.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I thought I could make this go more smoothly by having my watch set to buzz if I get a phone call in case we need to text each other about somebody who's raised their hand and we haven't noticed or whatever. And it's, as soon as I sat down, I got a junk call that started, you have been selected.
No, I haven't. I just watched the, a, a, I don't know if they call it a select board meeting from the town of Larchmont, and apparently they start their meetings with a pledge of allegiance, but tried to do a pledge of allegiance on Zoom. There's no pacing. They kept cracking up because they knew how disjointed it sounded.
This is apparently very hard. I was talking to two techie friends of mine who are serious music buffs, and you know, there've been a number of these things where people from around the world have played together. And it's not as simple as having one person signaling because there's very slight lags and the lags are bigger further away you are. So they have this technical, technical thing that creates some kind of sound that people can hear and compensates for this.
They would, they have a, it's called a something line. They have a, they're all listening to a master beat line or something.
But those have to be offset. So if you're in Hong Kong and I'm here, yours has to be some number of milliseconds off from where mine is. Or we, you know, when you watch TV news and they ask someone who's standing on the street to speak, there's delay. That's what it is. So it's apparently a big technical problem.
Well, it, and music groups like three guys who play music together can't use Zoom because you can't hear when you're making noise.
You can't.
It shuts off the incoming noise. So there are programs for it, but they're, they use separate servers. It's so complicated. We've never been able to get it to work.
Well, Zoom is essentially a cheap option. They're trying to minimize how much bandwidth we all take.
Yeah.
And that kind of stuff takes serious spend, but I'm just gonna go close a window that's blowing on.
Be right back.
My desk up here is in the attic and even with insulated ceilings and solar panels on the south roof, it still gets hot, so that's why I had a window open.
Have you ever gotten squirrels under your solar panel?
We haven't. My son has. My son lives in Salem and he's had them twice, so he had to pay. Oh, I forget what it was. It was a considerable amount of money for a pest removal company that deals with rodents.
Yeah.
To put a barrier around it and it was more than the solar company was going to charge him, but the difference was the pest control company guaranteed it. And he said that since he'd had them twice, but we've had no problems at all.
My son is finding little bits of insulation on the ground.
That's bad.
I think he's got a serious expense coming up.
Yeah, because if, you know, where the wires come in, these little tiny holes, they, well, they, they stream them together and then they bring it through a, a hole on the roof that goes through the soffit and then down, and it's only about this big. So if there's insulation coming out, then they've gotten, they've done.
No, they're finding it, the insulation on the ground outside.
But.
Falling off the roof.
How are they getting it to it? Isn't it under the roof?
It's rolling, they're gnawing it, it's rolling off the roof and falling on the ground.
And so this is rooftop insulation, not attic insulation?
No, I'm sorry, the wiring insulation.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, this is really so not good.
That's so not good because there's a lot of power up there.
Yeah, well, yeah, and it's a lot of expense to remove the panels and rewire them. I think, I think he should have done something the first time he saw it. Instead, he rigged up a, a, a power water sprayer on a, on a motion detector, thinking he could get them to go away. Which is fun, but isn't really solving the problem.
That sounds, that sounds pretty clever.
Oh, well, I, yeah, but, but he should have just called them, called the leasing company right away and.
Yeah, and ours, it depends on how they're put on and how many you have, but our contract says if we have them, remove them, if we want a new roof.
Yeah.
To remove it and reinstall it is $3,000.
Really? We called because that was, you know, when he bought the house, we knew it was gonna need a new roof and we called and it was gonna be a lot less than that.
To remove and.
Which is why, yeah, I thought, I think it was like $400.
Well, I'd go with them.
Well, but I don't know if that's true, you know, I hope it is.
I, I don't know, we've just been lucky. Maybe it's because that area gets so hot that they don't want to nest under it.
Ah, could be.
It's all south facing.
He doesn't have any trees nearby, but they claw their way up the corner board and, and he's got a lot of, he has bobcats. He's, he has a picture of a bobcat walking through his backyard. So.
He needs something to fly. He needs to get, get a bunch of red-tailed hawks or something.
I'm sure he's right on the corner of Bovenzi. Have you ever heard of Bovenzi? It's, I hadn't either. It's this huge wildlife conservation area in Worcester, just north. I think it's in Worcester, but towards Holden. And he actually. He abuts it.
Hmm.
So there should be a lot of enemies of squirrels.
They probably have other food besides the squirrels.
Yeah.
We've been lucky. We've had it for six years and we haven't had any sign of squirrels. We also don't have any electrical bills, which is the payoff.
That's.
Almost. I mean, we pay, we produced 96% as much as we have consumed over the last.
Wow.
And that's with a plug-in car.
Nice. It is 7:00 PM.
It is time to start. All right, we have 11 attendees. Uh, some of whose names I recognize, some don't have last names. So Nick, do you, Stu, do you want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, let's kick it off. Welcome, everybody. And I hope you can hear me. If there's any issue, then. You know, you're gonna have to let me know once we get started, but. So, welcome to the April 27th meeting of the Noise Advisor Committee, an advisory committee of the Lexington Select Board. Um, I just want to set out a few things at the start of the meeting so that we're all on the same page. This meeting is being recorded by the town and some attendees are participating by video conference. And as a matter of fact, most of us are, although I'm not sure if some of you are on the phone, but we'll find out. So please be aware that others may see you. Please do not screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Uh, some reminders before we begin, please mute your phone or computer when you're speaking. And also, please remember just to speak clearly and in a way that helps us generate accurate minutes. Before we start the public comments, because this, the whole thing is really about hearing from the landscapers, so forth. I'd like to remind the members of the committee and members of the public that the Lexington Select Board Procedures Manual covers our standards of conduct for this meeting. It states that members of the committee will behave with civility and courtesy and the chair will preserve, preserve decorum and prevent personal attacks. No one in attendance at the meeting will be allowed to make disparaging remarks about anyone. The chair will rule inappropriate comments out of order and issue warnings to the offending parties. We also have a zero tolerance policy for disparaging remarks about any person or group or their motives. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and this is consistent with what the select board currently does. Residents who wish to speak, please click on the raise hand button. So that's what I'd suggest you all do who are attending the meeting. Put your hand up. And we will bring you on to do your three minutes. And we've, we've talked about this in advance and frankly, depending on how many people there are, we have two meetings set up. We have tonight and we're gonna go until nine o'clock. And I'll give you like a short warning before nine o'clock comes. Um, and we also have next week planned for May the 5th, so there's a second opportunity for those people that are unavailable tonight. Perhaps they're busy, perhaps we don't get to everyone. So the idea here is we're gonna bring each of you as you put your hands up, and I see only one person has put their hand up at this point. So the rest of you. You're probably as good at, at Zoom as I am, which is not very good, but if you put your hand up, then we're able to bring you into the meeting. So take a look at your screen. And figure out how you raise your hands and we'll bring you in as you put your hands up. So everybody's gonna get heard to the extent we have enough time tonight, but you have to put your hand up so we can bring you in. As I said, the meeting is gonna end at nine o'clock. We've got another one scheduled. And I would just say at the outset, before I turn it over to Dan, who is the Chair of the Noise Advisor Committee. That. You know, we're, we're, we're gonna try and, we, what we really want to hear is what your thoughts are on the proposal. You know, nothing is set in stone at this point. We want to reach out to you to find out, you know, what you think and, and what suggestions you have. So having said all that, I, I really want the, you know, the evening to, you know, to go smoothly. You know, so please be respectful and what we're thinking about doing is in terms of, of questions, if there's questions raised, instead of responding to every question, we'll make a note of them. And, you know, maybe every, every few participants will, will start responding to some of the questions. So having said all that, I, I'd like to turn it over to Dan, who's been the Chair of the Committee for quite some time, has a lot of experience in this area. And he can sort of brief you on the, the background of, you know, where we are at this point. So Dan, over to you.
Thanks. First, before we begin, I want to give an apology and for some of you, this is a repeat, so just bear with me. We were rightly criticized for not reaching out to you, to enough of you earlier. That was, I just wanted to explain to you, that was not bad intentions on our part. It was simply. A failure of a group of volunteers to follow through on our own plans. That's no excuse. We should have, and I don't fault anyone for being annoyed with us for that. But it was just a failure on our part and that's why we're having these meetings and inviting your, your advice via email because we want, we have time now to. Alter the working proposal or to come up with something new. I want to give you a little background. I'm not going to repeat the whole fact sheet I sent you because we're, we want to reserve most of this meeting for you, not for us. But I want to give you some basic background. First, you need to understand our role. Our committee does not decide whether there will be regulation of noise from landscaping. That decision is up to town meeting. Our job, this is the job we have been given, is to advise the select board on ways to lessen noise problems, including recommending changes to the town's bylaw. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to come up with a reasonable way. To address this problem. The decision about whether to address it and how is not ours. So why landscape maintenance and why GLBs? Well, I'm sure it's no surprise to you that GLBs are one of the sources of noise to get many, gets many residents most upset. Most commercial GLBs actually violates town law. The town law is exactly the same as state law in terms of the noise limits that are allowed. And that's 10 decibels over ambient noise and you can't use three GLBs and meet that standard. But the way the code is written makes it very difficult, really impossible to enforce that in the case of landscaping. So. We need to recommend something specific to mitigate this noise, just as last year. The town meeting imposed some requirements on construction noise, which was the other major source of complaints. Uh, we're not the first to do this. There are a bunch of other towns in the immediate area that have regulated GLBs. There are. We don't have a complete list, but we have a list of over 100 nationwide, including 30 or more that have banned them entirely. Uh, the bylaw we sent you is a draft. We assume that you will give us suggestions that will allow us to modify this. But what we're looking for is the fairest and most effective way to reduce this noise problem. I suspect it doesn't seem this way to you, but our draft proposal, which I sent you, was. Reflects in a desire to strike a balance. On the one hand, we have some residents saying, I don't want to hear this ever again. And on the other hand, we have people for whom changing the way landscaping is done is going to be a serious expense. That's you. And so it's probably not apparent, but there are a number of provisions in the draft proposal that reflect that. For example, if you look at other nearby towns, the noise limits in our proposal are far, far more lenient. Than that in several other towns. And we did that because we looked up the noise levels for some common commercial GLBs and realized that if we set a noise level like, say, Newton or Brookline. You wouldn't be able to use your current equipment during a transition period and that we see, thought would be an unreasonable burden. So let me just say in closing, and then I really want to turn it over to you. That's why we're here. Given our role, the noise committee's role, we're not here to debate whether there should be. There should be. Some effort to control this noise. Our job is to propose how to lessen this noise problem. So that's where we want your help. Someone just asked, I'm gonna share a screen in response to a question. Someone asked where you can get the materials, so I'm gonna quickly share a screen. Uh, if I can find it, here we go. It's this one. If you go to the Lexington website. Which is www lexingtonmatt.gov, there is a page called landscaper information. It's under our committee. It has the information that was in our email to landscapers and at the bottom, it has the fact sheet I referred to and it has our current working draft of the bylaw. So you can get everything from that. So with that, let me stop talking and let's turn this over to people who've raised their hands.
Okay, thanks, Dan. And a couple of other points. What we want to do is hear from as many people as possible. So I just want to say again that. We're gonna restrict comments at least at this point for three minutes and that's what the select board does. You know, to the extent that we have extra time at the end, next week, people can follow up on things and so forth. Um, and secondly, if you want to submit information in written form, then please do using those links that, that Dan, that Dan just displayed on his screen. So I can see that like three people have their hands up now. There's, there's a number of other people on there and I'm not sure if you're that familiar with, you know, using Zoom and so forth, but. There's a little button at the bottom which says, you know, raise hands. So what, what I thought I would do and what, what Dan will do as well is. Bring people over as they raise their hands. If we have time at the end, as I said, people can have another, you know, further comment and, and, you know, we'll answer questions. As we go through, but to the extent that we're, if people raise questions, you know, ongoing, we might defer it until we've heard from a few more people, just to make sure that we've got everybody involved. Okay? So having said that. I see that Chris Stratford is, is, he was the first to have his hand up, so I will bring him over. And what I'll do is at, say, 2:45, I'll just break in this very briefly and say there's 15 seconds left. Okay, and we're, you know, a few seconds here and there or, or, you know, 30 seconds is not a big issue. So. The idea is we just want to hear as many people as possible and, and again, as Dan said, we're, we're looking for suggestions in terms of, of, you know, what you think about. The proposal and, you know, how it could be improved from your perspective. So I'll bring Dan over or bring. Chris over. Okay, Chris, you're, you're on mute.
I mean, now.
Yeah, the floor is yours. Go ahead, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Stratford of Stratford Landscape Contracting. Many of you already know me as I have been extremely vocal. Hi, everyone, I'm Chris Stratford of Stratford Landscape Contracting, many of you already know me as I have been extremely vocal about the lack of proper outreach regarding this proposal and the fact that this. Committee had committed to speaking with the landscape community prior to bringing this article to town meeting, but in fact had not engaged the greater landscape community in this process at all. At that time, Dan stated, I could explain how it happened, but that wouldn't be an excuse and it simply shouldn't have happened. However, I can tell you that it doesn't reflect any intent to ignore landscapers. I stated back in February that several landscapers would be willing to work with this committee on the article. However, since the committee indefinitely postponed this article, it appears in my opinion, nothing has truly changed. The committee has held four public meetings since then and has continued to alter the language of their proposal based solely. On the advice of one landscaper who operates an all-electric landscaping business. Never once during the recent redrafting time did the committee solicit any input from the greater landscape community. Nor have they reached out seeking to understand how we operate our businesses. And what the proposed change could mean not only to bigger firms, but also solo operators and what impact would be on customers. During one of the recent meetings which was recorded. Dan stated he has some ideas in his back pocket for how to show we have made changes but not actually alter the tone of the article. Which is a concerning statement to make in my mind. And finally, last week, the committee emailed an invitation to this meeting. Giving us less than one week's notice to come to a community meeting to present our opinions and views on the redrafted bylaw which we just received. This timing timeline is particularly challenging, not just because so short, but also coincides with the start of our 2021 landscaping season. An incredibly, incredibly busy time for most owners who are working six to seven days a week for upwards of sixty plus hours a week. I have not seen this meeting promoted anywhere else prominently on the town's website, social media or in print media such as the Colonial Times or Minuteman. And I continue to meet landscapers at the composting facility, the majority of them are still not even aware this issue is being discussed and proposed changes are on the table. Never mind being aware of public meetings seeking their input. The community meeting should be seeking input from all, not just one group. At this point, I am quite skeptical that any input we make will truly be taken into consideration. And I'm calling on the Noise Advisory Committee to truly make this a well-publicized, open and inclusive process, not only for landscapers. Livelihoods will be affected, but also for the residents of the town as well. I will state what I stated in February again. I personally would be more than happy to volunteer my time to assist in this process, to make sure the landscape community's concerns and livelihoods. Are taken into consideration, but we want to be a part of the redrafting process, thank you.
Chris, thanks very much, much appreciated. And you also were within the three minutes, which is perfect too. I just wanted to ask you by way of follow-up and then we'll move on to the next person, but. Do you have anything that you want to add at this point? From a substance standpoint in terms of the actual content of the draft bylaw and. You know, and any suggestions that, that you have at this point for, you know, for changes?
For tonight's meeting, I just want to voice that I'm very displeased with how this process has gone on. And has continued to go on, I do have many feelings that I would love to share, but this needs to be an open discussion. And inviting many more landscapers to community to this meeting, not just a handful of selected landscapers, so thank you.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks again, Chris, but I, I just, I wanted sort of. Reiterate what I said earlier, if you want to submit anything in writing in terms of substantive changes, please feel free. But thanks, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
So Nick, you want to replace?
Yeah, and I just want to say, you know, we're, we're sort of. Not entirely expert at. Promoting people and so forth, so let me just see.
I thought I just did, I did, okay.
Okay, alright, Chris has been removed, so have we brought somebody else on? Yeah, okay.
Hi, I'm Paulette Lamachia from Bob Lamachia Landscape. Let me just start out by thanking the committee for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my family's company. I would also like to thank you for your efforts on both drafts of the proposed bylaws. Again, I hope this is just the first draft. Addressing this very complex problem. It's a multifaceted issue that's gaining national attention. I'm sure all sides involved can cite studies and show examples to prove their point. There can be arguments back and forth of whose viewpoint is right and who's wrong. And we can draw battlegrounds and the battle lines in the sand. What we should be doing is collaborating to come up with a solution that works for all parties involved. Pardon my dog scratching at my door. The fact is that these bylaws affect a lot of people, both directly and indirectly. Increasing costs to both businesses and their clients. Small businesses may be shut down, employees may lose their jobs. Our livelihood and quality of life are at stake here. I know as well as we all do that these regulations are a wave of the future. And that the regulations. Are going to be passed to minimize noise pollution. I'm confident that everyone here can agree that this should be done right. Everyone should be able to be involved in open discussion. I'm asking that the committee restart the drafting process after two discussion of the impacts. Right now, as written, I think these regulations are inequitable and target the landscape community. They've been written again, as Chris stated twice, without our input. We were given short notice during our busiest time of the season to participate in any meetings. One could perceive this, as I did, that this invitation was just an attempt to appease town meeting members. And to give the appearance that the community actually did participate. In the discussions and in the drafting of these bylaws. When in a reality, it appears that our input is negligible. We want to be part of the solution, we want to take part of rewriting these laws so that. It is good for everybody, not just one-sided.
Okay, Paulette, thank you very much. Do, do you have anything at this point that, that you can share with us in terms of what you suggest? In terms of the bylaw?
Again, I stand with, with Chris, I think. We need to have time as a community to sit down and figure out what the best solution. Could be and we need to work together collaboratively to, to work this out, I know that. Technology is a big part of it. And right now, it's not where it needs to be, so timelines are a major concern for us. But I stand with Chris in saying, you know, that should be set for maybe next week's or the, the May fifth meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we can, we can put that on the agenda, certainly.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Paulette?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for joining us.
So the next person I have, we have no last name for her, named Erica. I'm promoting her now. Did that work? I don't see her showing up. And these, I just went to promote her and she didn't show up. When, when Stu said we're not expert at this, that's wrong, we're absolute novices at this.
Yeah. I think she's on now, Erica, I think, I think you're on mute, Erica.
Erica, can you unmute yourself, please, and so? And let us know who you are and.
You have me now?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't sound like an Erica because. On my wife's computer.
Can you tell us who you are?
My name is Bob Bernard, I am with RL Bernard Landscape in Lexington. And. I've been in Lexington for. Forty years working and went to high school here, grew up in Lexington. I think rather than echo the two sentiments that were given by Paulette and Chris. Which I do echo. I, I simply put it like this. Landscapers are pretty efficient people, we do small jobs and we have to be efficient at it, otherwise we don't make any money. We, we are the first to embrace technology and. I can tell you, I can name five things right off the top of my head that I've done in the last forty years that have simplified. And made the company more efficient. And I really don't think you have to hold a gun to anybody's head to get them to change. My simplest way of putting it is, there is no viable alternative right now. To replace what we use in a cost-effective manner, there are other. Machines out there and there are. Pieces of equipment that you could use as an example, but they're just nowhere near where they need to be for us to. Complete our tasks and stay efficient. So when the time comes, the landscapers will jump all over it because. Who doesn't want to save money and make money at the same time? I think that that's as simple as I can put it. Listening to some of the prior meetings and looking at. I'm not sure your name down in the bottom left-hand corner. I think it's Stu, oh no, Dan.
Yeah, you're right.
Dan, you know, I know that you don't agree with the, the prior two statements. But looking at your expression, it looks like that they struck a nerve and, you know. We, we are in the same boat, you know, every year at this time and. We are working, I got six days notice for this. If I divide six by twenty-four hours, I've had one hundred and forty-four hours to think about this and I've worked eighty of them. So it's, it's not really fair for us to have to, you know, try to deal with this right now. There's a lot of people in town that, in, in the landscape community that are, you know, up in arms about it and. I believe as the other two and probably all other people in this landscape forum. Believe that this would have been rammed right down the throat on February eighth or March twenty-second and you wouldn't have had any remorse. And, and now, I think that reaching out is fine, but, you know, it's. It's just a tough time for us to do it. We need time to figure this out, we need time to get together and collaborate. We need, we need to have input from a lot of other people that are probably watching this right now, but may not be logged on.
Okay, thanks, thanks Bob. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but what, what's your sense in terms of timing, in terms of, you know, I know you guys are busy. What, do you think you'd have something for next week or what, what's your thinking?
No, well, let me put it to this way, Stu. You know, I've listened to a couple of meetings prior to this. And I know you guys was brought to my attention, you had four meetings in between. The time that we, the last meeting in February and nobody's ever reached out to us, you guys are collaborating and scheming to make it go through. But you're asking us to make a decision, I don't even think we really need to make a decision because I don't think there's any reason to do anything because there's no viable alternative. The one person on your committee that has actually said it and I compliment her is Vicky Blyer. I, I didn't know Vicky from a while back and I've done work for her on her yard. And she's the one that said in some of your meetings that we didn't do this right. You know, she may not agree with me in, in those exact terms, verbatim, but she was the one that I thought was going to be a staunch opponent and she actually. Had a little bit of compassion for us, you know, but that doesn't, you know, change the fact that she's still a proponent of it. I believe that, you know, right now, there is no viable alternative and I believe that. Doesn't have any merit, you know, to go forward and, and I don't even think a concession. Should be given, I think that there's, there's nothing to do, I mean, what are we, what are we going to do if you eliminate fossil fuel equipment and. You know, ban gas-powered backpack blowers. You, you guys have, you guys have talked about it yourself, it's going to drive the cost through the roof. There's thirty-three of four thousand people in Lexington. I think we probably represent three to four thousand of them. This, this town, like Arlington, as you brought up, is going to get divided. And I have talked to many people and, and I've yet to find many people that are in support of it right now. You guys say that you have talked to a lot of people, how many people have you talked to and what, what are they saying? How many people have you talked to, Stu?
Well, you know, this is, this is part of the, the issue because, I mean. As Dan said, we are advisory committee to the Select Board and. They've received complaints, we've received complaints and I mean, frankly, it's a, it's a tough year because people are working from home. You know, with what's been going on and. And, you know, we've received quite a few complaints concerning, you know, what, what can we do about. You know, the noise problems that are going on, so. I can defer this to, to Dan, you know, we, we, we've had other discussions as well. Bob, if you've listened to the, you know, the, the previous meetings we've had, I mean, there's been discussions about. Bulk purchases, there's a bill that's been introduced into the state, the State House. Concerning the potential and, you know, and I mean, there's no guarantee of, of this, but. You know, of, of state subsidies to, to change over equipment to green equipment, so. I'm probably not the best person to respond to that, but Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to throw in a couple of things, first, I'd just like to correct a couple of matters of fact. Chris, you entered four redrafting sessions, there were no four redrafting sessions. That was not the purpose of those four meetings, we redrafted once and the reason was that the landscaper you mentioned said to me. The way the town council has, has worded your proposal. Doesn't reflect your intent. Because it's not clear that you are not trying to regulate, pardon the double negative. Certain kinds of equipment for which there are no alternatives and he listed a whole bunch, he said there are all these types of equipment that are used in landscape insulation. For which there are no substitutes. He said, you're not going to very well get people who cut trees not to use two-cycle chainsaws, he had a whole list of them. And he said, I think you ought to clarify what you mean because otherwise the discussion is going to get really off track. So the only redrafting we did during those four meetings was to modify the proposal to make explicit. The kinds of landscaping work that we were not, that would not be affected by the proposal, that's all, that's the only redrafting we did. I also want to respond to your saying a handful, we actually contacted fifty-seven landscapers. And the reason it took us so long to do it is there's no data, it took us scores of hours, three of us worked on this. To try to figure out who we should contact. We first had to find names of landscapers, we used six sources for that. And then we had to try to figure out which ones are in Lexington, then we had to try to get contact information and Chris, I asked you for that, you sent it for four people, but not for others. All of this took a lot of time. And then when we got that done, we had to go to the town and said, they said, you cannot use your email account for this. You have to use constant contact, we have, you have to tell us names, etc. So there are a lot of procedural delays, there was no intent on our part, we would have been delighted to get this out to you two months ago. It just wasn't practical. So. In terms of costs, the only thing I want to mention there is. The information we've gotten. So far, and it's not as complete as we would like because some of it's from another part of the country where landscapers use their equipment differently. Is it electric equipment right now means a big upfront cost and lower lifetime costs. Because there's virtually no maintenance and the energy costs are much, much lower. But the, the upfront costs are very high and it's, they're high because of batteries. So this is one of the reasons why our committee has been in contact with vendors and with people in the town. To see if it's possible to work out some kind of bulk purchasing arrangement that would lower those initial costs. And it's also the reason why we put in a three-year transition period, which may be the wrong length of time. But the idea was, A, that gives you time to run down equipment you already have. And B, the cost of batteries are going down, is going down about sixteen or eighteen percent a year, so things will be cheaper and equipment will be better in three years. But I don't want to spend a lot of time talking, I just wanted to add that one point and clarify the points of, of fact. About why you got the note when you did. So, Stu, can we go on with other?
Yeah, okay, so thank you very much, Bob, appreciate your input and. If, if you want to participate next week with anything substantive, please feel free.
Can I ask you one more question?
Of course.
Yeah.
You didn't answer my first question, how many complaints have you got, do you guys keep track of it?
Yeah, we do. The, the background of this is that Lexington has no unified way to report noise complaints, that's something else we've been asked to work on. So even when there are things that generate a lot of complaints, like the rock breaking and construction on Lincoln, Lincoln near Temple Isaiah, which generated scores and scores of complaints, we got very few of them. So we've gotten, I don't know how many, it's not a large number. Almost all of the noise complaints we have gotten have been about GLBs. But we did a lot of community outreach. We used social media. We put something in the Lexington Minute Man. We had a survey of townspeople and and committee members we met with, I think it was eight community groups. And not everyone agrees. I mean, some people are fine with things the way they are, but a lot of people gave us the feedback that they're very disturbed by the amount of noise the GLBs produce.
You have a number though.
No, I don't have a number handy, but it's small. We, the total number of complaints we've gotten about everything is small, but all but, all but two or three have been about GLBs.
And may I add something? I'm a member of several Lexington Facebook groups and there's the Lexington list. And all someone has to do is say something about leaf blower noise. And and the result is a long thread of people who are upset and angry over it. I never counted them, but it was like someone shooting off a starting pistol. And the complaints and anger just roll in on these lists.
Then I guess we have a Mexican standoff because I have about three thousand people that tell me they don't have a problem with it. So that's the thing. You don't have a number of complaint. I can say we have a lot of people supporting it. I've worked on your house, Vicky, and you didn't complain when I was there.
I'm just gonna say one thing here and then I think we should move on to another attendee. I don't think the fact that a customer doesn't complain tells you they're not unhappy. I went through this with my next door neighbor about someone we both hired. And I ended up not renewing their contract and because they wouldn't speak to me about quieter equipment. They did not. They weren't, they weren't happy with noise. They just didn't want to disrupt what they were doing. But I think, I think, I think we should move on to other people who want to have a chance to talk at this point.
I don't disagree with you, Dan. I just think that there's no other alternative right now that works. When the time comes, we'll be all over it, guaranteed. We are going in that direction and I think most landscapers are aware of that. We've, we've been going in that direction for twenty years on cars. But we have not hit the point where it is available to us right now in a fashion that allows us to be effective and the cost effective and productive. It's just not there. I've looked into it. The first time that this was brought to my attention, we started looking. I've talked to people. I've talked to, I've gone to hardware stores. I've gone to my suppliers. They laugh at me and say it's a joke, you know. Have you seen that ad on TV with the guy with the little blower? And he's, and he's, and he's got the guy next door to him with a big blower. And I have hair dryers that that blow more leaves than some of these things that they're promoting electric. Just doesn't work right now. If, when it comes, we'll be all over it, I promise you, but it's not there right now.
Okay.
I think we need to move on to the next person.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
You guys, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's bring over Christine. Hello? Christine, I think you're muted.
Yes, she's muted. She's, she's on the panel, but she's muted.
Okay. Can you hear us? Christine?
She's unmuted. She's muted again.
Yeah, muted again. Christine, can you hear us? Okay, we're, we're not hearing anything from you. I don't know if there's some audio issue on your end.
Muted now. Can you try speaking now, see if we can hear you? Can't hear.
Okay, Christine, maybe I'll move you off and if there's an issue, we can bring you in later.
Yeah, let's go to the others and bring her back in in a few minutes so she has a chance to figure out what's going wrong.
I'll take, I'll take Christine out.
And let's, the next person with the hand up is, I don't know how to pronounce your name, Chris, Chris Crugnelli, is that correct? Let me move him. I apologize if I pronounced that wrong. There he is. Chris, you're muted. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Hi, how are you guys doing today?
Good. Hi, Chris.
Good, good, good. Yeah, so basically my name is Chris Crugnelli with Crugnelli Landscaping, Lexington. I did, I'm here pretty much, I probably have the least amount of knowledge of all the other, some of the people, some of the landscapers have spoken prior this evening, which is part of the problem. I do request you guys to redraft this and give it all the time as, as the people before me had had mentioned. Every landscaper I've spoken to, small, big, in the last, ever since I've heard about this, the last week, two weeks, have no idea about this, what's going on and, and the, and the true impact it's gonna have on, on, on both residents, residents' ability to get their properties done in a costly manner and, and both landscapers. I do think it's very valuable, as everybody else has said tonight, that we, the people doing the majority of the work in town to clean up the leaves should have some input. I understand it may not be, have been your intention. But I, I think it's crucial to, to give us an opportunity. We're out there doing it. We understand the efficiencies, the inefficiencies, and, and the problems that may come along with, with doing it a certain way or going to electric, whatever the case may be. And it does make us seem as though we're sort of an afterthought in, in the whole process. Let's face it, the town of Lexington, most properties have many trees. It is what it is. They have a lot of trees which produce a lot of leaves. And there's a very narrow window in November, November one to December one, to get, to get the, the bulk of the leaves picked up. The inefficiencies of the alternatives you guys are suggesting don't, don't give you enough time to complete the job in a timely manner before the first snow comes. It is what it is. There's leaves. There's also snow. And plows, you know, plows make, make noise with this. It's part of Mother Nature. And we need to be able to, to tame, I guess, Mother Nature in an appropriate manner, you know. People need their, the snow moved in a timely manner. People need their leaves moved in a timely manner. And, and making this more cost prohibitive, prohibitive, excuse me, to customers will discourage them or discourage them from using a landscaper, which in turn will put it on their shoulders. And when you're pulling two, three truckloads of leaves out of a property, to even the thought of even having a customer do it themselves, both physically or excuse me, physically is just, is unfathomable. It doesn't make sense to me. I think there is a compromise. We certainly have great input if you guys are willing, hopefully you're willing to hear it, great input on a solution. But having an alternative, as Bobby mentioned, there is no alternative that is nearly effective at this moment in time. We do understand it is noisy, but, you know, it's something that needs to be switched over when the time is right. Yeah, and that's, that's, that's kind of all I have to say.
Right, thank you. Thanks so much, Chris.
I have a few follow up questions if I could.
Yep.
Chris, since you raised something, can I raise a follow up question?
Absolutely, yeah.
So most of the discussion today has been about one part of the proposal, which is an eventual phase out of, of gas powered leaf blowers.
Understood.
But, but the other part of the proposal, which is similar to, to what's been done elsewhere in Massachusetts, is seasonal limits. So the, the argument for that is there's a very heavy leaf load in the fall, as you said. And particularly when it's wet, you need a lot of power to get that stuff up. But that's not true. When you mow a lawn and you've got a few grass clippings on the sidewalk. So it'd be helpful to hear from you and from other people about the other part, parts of this idea, in particular the seasonal restrictions. Because that's, that's the more common response. If you look at what other towns have done, most of them have done, actually all of them that haven't banned GLBs have put in seasonal restrictions, all the ones I know. And some of them have done more. Some of them have said you can only have two, two units on six thousand or ten thousand square feet. Some of them have said you have to use units that are sixty seven decibels or less, which means most, no powerful GLBs. But leaving that, those details aside, what about seasonal restrictions? It would be really helpful for us to get your feedback about that part.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, so the shoulder season, so spring and, and, and fall, fall, I think is crucial to have effective leaf blowers, which in this case currently, the way the market is, is gas. Summer, I'm sure some of the other landscapers may not like what I'm about to say, but I mean, there is alternatives to have a lower leaf blower to blow off grass, glass, excuse me, grass clippings off the sidewalk. Yeah, that, that makes more sense because it's doable. But, um, and then the spring, again, you, you have, you know, if you're restricting with the, assuming again, early snowfall, most people won't be able to get to their leaves if it's those middle of November. So that turns over to the fall, excuse me, the spring, which in turn is essentially the same, you know, the same type of cleaning. So, yeah, I mean, the, the summer months, there probably is more room to have, you know, less noisy machine to do the, to, to do the deed. But, and again, I'd love to compromise, excuse me, to discuss it. But I think there, there is a way to get around, you know, get around this, but, but the, the sure thing is the fall is essential. I mean, there's no.
So let me give a follow up question. So the way we got the seasonal limitations that are in the, for the current proposal was by looking at what other places have done. Right? So you guys know better than if you were, if you're willing to agree to a seasonal limit, you have better information than we do about what that ought to be, you know, when, when the fall season ought to start, how long you need it to go. So it's just something I like to throw out there for all of you to think about that if the end result of this is something that goes forward with seasonal restrictions of some kind, we could really use your feedback about what they should be.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and especially the fall season. I mean, you do have early, mid November to all the way to up until, you know, in some cases, Christmas, depending, depending on, on how the snow goes in the, in the freezing. The snow is the big issue. And if you make it cost prohibitive, less people use landscapers. That means it goes on their shoulders. They're less likely to complete the job because some, most people don't realize how much work actually goes in. When you're taking two, three truckloads from a property, they don't realize it. And if you get some, some, you know, some wet, wet leaves, it makes it almost ten, I'm not, be honest, probably ten times harder. And which will discourage people from actually doing it, which leaves more leaves everywhere unsightly for the entire town. I mean, it, it kind of trickles down.
Okay, well, let me leave this as an open question. I think we have at least one more meeting. We could have another. But I'd like to leave this as an open question for all of you to think about is whether seasonable, seasonal limits is something you could live with and if so, what they should be. Because those aren't cast in stone at all. Alright, so why don't we leave that as an open question if we could? And, and Chris, if you're comfortable with this, go on to the next person on the, on the list.
Yeah, but yeah, that works. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the next is Rick DeAngelis. Why don't I bring him over while someone else?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Not, yes, you're there. You're muted, Rick. You'll have to unmute yourself.
I followed your instructions and unmuted myself.
Yep.
I'm Rick DeAngelis. I'm a forty five plus year resident of Lexington. And I'm kind of interested in, in, in all what's going on for a simple reason. I am a member and actually the chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Like your, your committee, we are advisory to the select board. And I know the difficulty that committees have, you can't please everybody all the time. But I've, I've heard some interesting observations. But the most notable takeaway for me is that maybe you ought to consider taking a step back, maybe two steps back. You obviously have a draft by law. You spent some time putting it together. And, you know, without getting into the nitty gritty of who put it together and how, how it came to be, it might make sense. I think the overriding thought that I have heard here this evening is that a collaborative committee effort to draft something or at least to exchange ideas might be a more preferable way to go than presenting a draft bylaw and saying you've got two weeks or whatever to comment on it. I would recommend, and I'm not, look, I'm not your, I'm not on your committee. I'm not the chair of your committee, but I've been involved enough. And like Mr. Sandin, whose picture I see, we both were involved in the Hotwell zoning, rezoning initiative. And it was a tremendous process, if you will. And it was an iterative process where all constituencies contributed and participated and didn't feel like they were, there was going to be retribution or what have you. And I would recommend that you sit down, whether virtually or in around a table, maybe outside, now that you can, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear masks, and exchange ideas and see what comes of it. Alright, and it should never not be rushed to judgment to get the town meeting whenever town meeting is in October. Because if we don't get the town meeting, the world will end. The world will not end if you don't get the town meeting in October. It's more important to get it right and to get to a defined date that may, may in fact be arbitrary. Just offering you guys my thoughts. At the end of the day, you have the same responsibility to your committee and the select board that I have to mine. So those are my thoughts. Thanks so much.
Okay, thanks a lot, Rick.
You're welcome.
So who do we have next?
So now we have Nick. I'll bring him over, Dan.
Okay, and I'll. Okay.
Nick, are you there? You just have to unmute yourself.
There.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can hear you now. Yep, go ahead, please.
My name is Nick Venuto. I'm from Nick's Landscaping out in Arlington. And I, I agree with, with pretty much all of the landscapers that have been. That's number one. Number two, I do agree with Dan on the whole entire idea of buying equipment and having an upfront cost expense that's going to be outrageous. Quite frankly, the, the equipment is, it's just not, it's not there. The technology is not there, we're never going to be able to keep up with what we have today. And we, we do understand that. The only thing that really scares me is that in, when this happened in Cambridge, there was virtually, it was extremely fast. It was a fast turnaround where we had not one little bit to say. And that's something that we want to avoid, I think, in this particular case. Because if we can't be heard, then what's the sense of doing any of these meetings? So the, the problem that remains, I mean, I, I do a lot of work in Cambridge and I do a lot of work in Brookline. And we do see a lot of the issues at hand there. But when they made these laws, they did not include any of us. And that's, that's primarily what I think should happen. I think there should be a lot of us involved that you can hear us. And I, and I'm glad that these meetings are happening. But it definitely is something that we, we need to come to some sort of conclusion, the both of us, that we're all happy.
Nick, do you have anything like that you can offer today or what, what's your thought on that?
I mean, right now, what, what we've been doing in Cambridge, and, and again, I've, I've done a lot of years in Cambridge with this whole entire process and the same thing in Newton and, and Brookline. I think Dan has a point that there should be seasonal. And I, I, I do agree, I agree with what Chris said. You can use, you know, lower decibel equipment for summertime, absolutely. I one hundred percent agree with that. Um, it doesn't have to be electric, does it? That's something that we can discuss. But I think for the spring and for the fall, no matter what, we have to have the power behind us. If not, we just never finish any of our work.
So can I ask a follow up question, Nick?
Sure.
We've had in our discussions, this has come up a number of times and we just don't have an answer. So you mentioned Brookline, Newton and Cambridge. They all impose noise limits of sixty five or sixty seven decibels at fifty feet. And none of the, the commercial grade GLBs come close to that. So how do you cope in the fall and spring in Cambridge and, and what do you do? Do you use other?
Well, to take, to tell you the truth, I mean, a lot of times I use bigger equipment and not use backpacks. And unfortunately, that's what it's going to result to. Because if I If I have to use a pull type blower or anything like that, then guess what? It's going to get louder. And it's it's certainly not going to be more efficient. But. Naturally, I think what Bob said. Once the technology is there, we're all willing to spend the money. We're all willing to do the switch over. That's not a problem.
So do you use, when you, when you go to those towns to use things like. Uh four stroke blowers that are a little less powerful or just hope that, you know, use what you've got and and. Hope that nobody gets.
Well, that it's it's back and forth. I do have a couple, I do have blowers that are. Literally right on the cusp of that sixty five to sixty seven range. But they don't. Do anything. As much as what we currently use. So. The the other thing that has to be looked at is. Spacing. The amount that you can use on a on a square footage basis. I think things like that. I think a lot of the landscapers, you know, they, don't get me wrong, there are. A lot of um, a lot of. Small companies that will use two or three and they're next to each other. We understand that. That's probably the wrong way to to go about it. But. That's something that we would have to sit down with you to discuss.
So that's something I I'd like to leave as a question for further discussion too, because. Oh, we had discussions in our committee about this. And, you know, our even Arlington, which has the weakest of the restrictions in any. Of any nearby town limits the number of units per. Per lot. And in my observation, it's it's rare to see fewer than three, even on small lots in Lexington, and I've seen as many as five. Um, and what we thought was, well, if we were to. Say. Propose, if we were to propose no more than two, then of course it just takes longer, but the noise is a lot. Lower, so it'd be helpful to have. Your input about whether that might be an alternative. Uh, way to cut down complaints.
I agree. Um, I think, I think it's something that should be definitely looked at. Um. But also, I mean, I've I've done in the past, God, six years, I've been doing a lot of testing on different blowers and and I like to, you know. Naturally switch over, but there just simply isn't anything out there right now. And I, and I think, is it Rick that was before me, Rick DeAngelis?
Yeah.
He, I think he hit the nail on the head too, was what he said about. Why do we have to make something? You know, a decision as fast as possible. Let's. Take our time and make sure that everybody is happy. In this particular case. And if it if it's going to take, you know, six or seven meetings, then so be it. At least we know that we're all working together and trying to to gain that the same goal.
Okay. This is, this is really helpful. Nick, I really appreciate this. Let's. Sort of make a resolution that we will come back to these. These topics and see if we can hammer out some. You know, some compromised way of dealing with those.
Sure. I I completely agree one hundred percent.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next person and we'll talk to you soon.
The next person is Jenny Keegan. I'll move her over. I'll promote her.
Hi, Jenny.
Still muted. Need to unmute yourself.
Yeah.
We can't do that from here.
Jenny, are you there?
Yeah. Yeah, Jenny has turned into Mike.
Okay, Mike. Welcome, welcome.
My wife, my wife's computer.
Yeah.
Uh, Mike Keegan, uh, been a Lexington resident for over sixty years, been in business for forty years. And uh. I I mean, I guess tonight, I mean, to to be perfectly honest with you, I've been pretty angry with the the way everything has been handled. Uh, to be boxed out of something. That uh has such a big. Uh, it's such a big part of what we do. Was really aggravating. Um, I mean, I have heard some decent things as far as. Letting us in, but I think the biggest problem is that we were never let in. To sit at the table, and I think that was an important thing that was. That was missed. Um. And it created a lot of anger, it created a lot of confusion. Uh, and, you know, uh, as I've told a couple of other people I've talked to, I'm I'm hoping I'm somewhere near the end of all this. But there's a lot of people that have got into this that are heck of a lot younger than I am and they've invested a lot of money into this. This is what they want to do. And this would really put. A a damper on the way. You know, they do business as of right now, and I just think that's wrong. Um. As far as, you know, what some of the other guys have commented on. Um, you know, to think that uh we're kind of, uh, you know, all gas and oil and that's it. Um, I'm on the computer a lot just trying to find things. You know, whether it's electric, whether it's something different, whether it's propane. Um, and unfortunately, as a lot of the other guys have said, the electric stuff just hasn't come on. Uh, you know, to be able something that we can use every day. Maybe it is something that we can use in the summertime. But I still think we have to have that discussion. I'm also a little uh ticked off about. We have uh on your uh. Your website, when it comes up with the noise committee, and it seems like you guys are advertising. Uh, for electric landscape companies. I've been in business here for. Forty years donated time, donated money. And I get zero. And this guy, I don't even think he lives in Lexington. And you guys have given him and two or three other companies free advertising, and I think that's absolutely ridiculous. Uh, he can go just like everybody else does. Hey, for his advertising. Word of mouth. Uh, but as far as you guys putting them on your website, I think it's just. Something wrong. Um. Myself, I would love to be in any conversation that you guys have. Um, I think it would be advantageous to to both sides. Um, and I think you've, you've probably got that from just about everybody that you've talked to this evening. You know, as as time goes on, I think it's certainly going to happen. Uh, I think uh. The batteries are getting better. I mean, I can't say that it, uh, you know, them making lithium batteries is any uh. Is any better for the environment than uh. Getting oil out of the ground right now. I think that's. Pretty tough thing that nobody kind of takes a look at. And also, you still have the disposal of these batteries that, uh. You know, I'm sure there are right and wrong ways to do it, but uh, given the easy way, I'm sure there's going to be plenty of companies that are just going to flip them in the dumpster and there they go. So that's a concern of mine also. But uh. Yeah, uh, I've been on plenty of uh. Uh volunteer committees. Uh, I thank you guys for your time, but I just hope you uh. Kind of open the the borders, so to speak, and at least listen to what we have to say before uh. Something like this goes down the pipe. But uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank, thanks a lot, Mike. We really appreciate your input into this and.
Can I throw a comment in here, Stu? Because quite a number of people have talked about where is it sitting down? I need to explain. What our limitations are. This came up actually quite some time ago when. When uh Chris Stratford, I think he's dropped off. Asked if he could have a meeting with several of the people he's pulled together and us. And a little red flag went up in my mind and I wrote to the town council, the town manager. And got an immediate reply saying you are not legally allowed to do this. We can't even meet as a committee. The five of us. Except in a publicly announced open meeting. And those meetings have to be posted forty eight hours in advance, alright? So we don't have the ability to say, alright, let's sit down at a table with six of you and talk about this. We have to use open meetings like this. By law.
Close at forty eight hours and we'll have an open meeting someplace.
They're they're posted, they're all posted in the.
And to say you you went up and then tried to find fifty seven people, all you had to do was open a telephone book.
We we use the telephone book as one of our sources.
My name was there, I never got called. Okay. Enough, I mean, we could beat this around the bush.
No, I I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify, Mike, what we're able to do. So we can, we construct, if we could structure. Another kind of open meeting, do it somewhat differently than this one. But we have to meet in publicly announced open meetings. That's the only way we are allowed to function. That's the only point I want to make. Okay, that, so when.
So you're saying we we can't have an open meeting where. We go back and forth with ideas?
Yes, we can, but it has, yes, of course we can. As I said, we can structure it different ways. But we can't have private meetings. That's what we can't do. We're not allowed to do that.
I don't think we were requesting a.
Okay, I'm just, I I'm not trying to argue with you. I just wanted to clarify for everyone what we're allowed to do. So when you make, rest of us, they have to fit with that, that, because that's. That's we have to do. We have no choice. Okay?
Fair enough.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Um, I think the one person remaining with a hand up is Anthony Maduno. I'll move him over. Uh, did that work? Yes.
Yeah, Anthony.
Yep, hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Sorry about earlier. Uh, my name is Anthony Maduno, co owner of Maduno Landscape, a Lexington based company. I spoke last February to the Board of Select, expressing my frustrations with the Noise Advisory Committee's lack of outreach to local landscapers. The Noise Advisory Committee indefinitely postponed Article twenty eight from being presented at town meeting because they did not follow their own guidelines to include. Landscapers input on the article that, and it appears nothing's changed. The Noise Advisory Committee has been working on this article for three years, yet emailed us a redraft a week ago. One week is clearly not enough time for us to review it, provide our own opinions, research electric equipment and review. Other towns' blowers restrictions. Our busiest season is right now. Most owners are working sixty plus hours a week. This is one more inequity that the Noise Advisory Committee is putting on us. While having an opportunity to speak tonight is appreciated, many landscapers that I have spoken. With have similar questions and concerns. One major concern. Are the complaints that the Noise Advisory. Committee has received coming from five individuals making a hundred complaints or a hundred individuals? Also, we'd like to know what the most common complaints are. With this information, we can address those concerns. Lastly, has the Noise Advisory Committee polled the community to get a clear picture? Of the concern of the vast majority of residents, or are they appeasing the complainants and pushing their own agenda on the community? It is my request that the Noise Advisor Advisory Committee be fully transparent and provide us with adequate time to present our concerns. And opinions, most importantly, allow us to be heard in a format that's open for discussion.
Okay, th- thanks, Anthony. Um, so that sort of leads me to the next question, which is how much time do you need? Um, you know, to come up with, you know, some suggested changes or, you know, a lot of the things that we've talked about tonight.
I mean, it's hard to say. Many people have echoed that for us right now, time is short. I can tell you, we need more than a week. We need more than two weeks. You guys have been working on this for, like I say, for what I believe is close to three years. I'm not saying we need that, but. We need some time to get together and meet as a group. And uh, you know, decide what's going to work for us as landscapers, and you know, and then we'd love to sit down at the table. And 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 talk to you guys and come up with a compromise. Um, something that's, you know, going to work for everyone, but right now, I mean, I I. I haven't had time to to do what's necessary for me to really sit here and, you know. Tell you guys what 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 is and what isn't going to work.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, thanks for your time tonight.
We have one more person who's raised a hand, George Arthur Robinson. So um, I'll move him over. Uh, I think I just moved him over. Yes, there he is.
Hello?
Uh, there you are.
Yeah. Uh, good evening. I'm George Arthur Robinson. Um. Uh, I work with uh F and R Landscaping, which uh. I've uh. Owned for twenty six years and then I sold it, but I still work for it. Um, so I've been in business for over thirty two years. Uh, I I would just like to say that my biggest concern is, as everybody else has basically expressed, is we haven't had enough time to prepare for this. I mean, the the spring and the fall seasons are killers for us. The the summer is hard enough, but. We understand that there's going to be a change coming, but more than, you know, two meetings. Um, and being notified a week before makes it fairly difficult. To um, to collectively sit down with everybody. As as the landscapers group themselves. And um, come up with some suggestions to to fine tune the um. Recommendations, your your bylaws that you're you're trying to to move forward. Um, you know, that being said, um. I think if we can just get this to kind of tap the brakes on a little bit and get everybody so they can get their heads together. You you might be able to get something that will work for everybody without having, um, you know, any kind of animosity at at the end of it, but. Um, this is, this is definitely impacting. Landscapers, I can tell you that because, you know, this is how we make our money and it's it it's tough. It's, you know, it's easy to go say you you have to change within three years. Well, when things aren't quite, quite there yet to be able to change to. To do things effectively and efficiently. Um, it 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 can, it it may ruin some guys and their businesses. So, but I I appreciate the opportunity to uh just express my opinion tonight. And um. I look forward to hopefully being able to meet with the landscapers and then have them in an open meeting forum, present some ideas to you. But you 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 really need to give us a little bit of time to. To come up with a collectively sit down and come up with it and and, you know, hopefully get something we can all work together with.
Okay, thanks, George Arthur. Appreciate it. Do you have a sense in terms of of timing when you'd be able to sort of come up with some ideas?
Yeah, honestly, as Anthony said, it it certainly wouldn't be a week or two. It it you'd have to be, you know, longer than that. Because I I can tell you right now, crunch time is try, it's trying to get the spring cleanups done. And and other things and and, you know, it's it's a tough time of year because people are jumping up and down looking for you right now. So, you know. It could, it's, it would be longer than two weeks, I would say, you you're probably looking at least a month. But because you have to get all the landscapes together, as you said, you had fifty seven that you were able to identify. And to to collectively get them to input their ideas, because as it is, you get home by seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night. And, you know. You you have to be able to do your paperwork and things like that, and then. You know, communicate with each other, whether we do it via Zoom or we do an open meeting someplace ourselves. Uh, I think that, you know, you're going to probably look at at least at least a month. Just, you know, for us to be able to collectively get everybody together.
Okay, well, look, thanks for your input.
Can I ask, okay, I do one other question about that, because um, if we have more meetings, I. I did get one complaint from somebody. We had assumed that. We'd better meet after dinner because people are going to be working late hours while, you know, because it's light out for a long time. But I did get a complaint from someone who said it would be a lot easier if the meetings were at five or six o'clock. Do you agree with that? Would you?
Well, I can, I can speak for me personally. No, because five or six o'clock, I'm I'm still trying to wrap up a day.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, if it raining out, maybe I'm out working, that might be the only time you could do it, but um. No, that that might be a difficult time. I mean, the biggest problem we have right now is getting collectively the landscapers together. To kind of pool our ideas and suggestions. How to, you know, how to approach this and then be able to bring it to you. As your your committee. You know, in a in a fashion that we could, we could, we could present it to you that. Would be an organized way that you could move it forward and, you know, we could openly discuss it.
Okay.
Vicky, did you, did you want to comment?
Yes, I had one little comment, which is that um, several of the landscapers. Focus was on wondering how many people actually complained. And I I'm a little concerned that one. Part of this will be forgotten when people go off and start discussing this. And the part I'm afraid is getting forgotten is that. The use of a single gas blower. It makes noise that exceeds our current longstanding noise bylaw. So it's it's not just an issue of people complaining, it's an issue of. The noise bylaw that we and the state have had for a long time. So that should be part of the thinking.
So we have, um, I think. We're beginning to raise hands again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, George Arthur.
Thanks, George Arthur. Um, Bob has raised his hand again. Can I bring him over?
Yeah.
Bob, promoting you back to panelist. There you go. You should appear momentarily.
Hi, Bob.
Nope, he's not muted. Not sure what's.
Bob, are you there?
He's he's not showing up as muted, but I don't hear anything, I'm afraid.
Okay, well, we can, we can move him out. I don't see any other hands up at this point. If anybody else is listening and wants to participate, just please raise your hand and we'll bring you right over.
And we can have more unstructured discussion, more free discussion now since we have time left.
Anybody else want to participate?
Doesn't look like it. While, while we're waiting, let me, let me make.
Raise a hand up.
Okay.
I'll bring him over.
Yep.
Patrick? You're on mute.
Yes, I'm here. Can you see me?
There you are. Hi, how are you doing?
I'm good. Hi, Stu. So, um, I am definitely not everybody else with all the history in Lexington like everybody's got. And I'm a young business, but I am all-electric. So, uh, one thing I must say is that I, for years, did work for guys with gas and, uh, so I know the power of the big backpack blower and the ease that it does with the leaves. Um, but, um, right now I'm building my business around all-electric and, uh, it's, it's working out. Um, so I've got some notes here. Uh, one thing is that I like that you guys are allowing for the seasonal in there. Uh, because I think that, you know, after April thirtieth and up to October, um, a lot of the times guys are starting their leaf blower after cutting the grass is just to blow off the driveways and the walkways. And it's unnecessary because you have way more power than you need to do that task all summer with the electric setups. Um, and it is, it is costly upfront. Like you guys said, um, I put a solar system on my rig, so I'm able to charge my batteries on the go. I don't have to worry about having a whole bunch of batteries. I got just enough to give me unlimited power as long as it's a sunny day. Um, so I basically am on the side. I, I am for guys really preparing to switch over because, uh, that's just the way it's going. It's, it's the way it's going with all the towns. Um, and maybe, um, so I have, uh, I work with a company, Greenworks, that I get my equipment from, and I, I have a national partnership with them, so I get a discount. So I'm wondering, maybe that's something the town could get involved in, uh, providing guys that work within Lexington, uh, some sort of a discount towards all these expensive batteries. And, uh, you know, that's, that's pretty much all the notes I had. Like I said, I'm a young business and so I have the benefit of being able to price things out and, and wrap things around this equipment. And so I'm not having to make a change like the, uh, like the gas guys. But I do sympathize for them because it is, it is very difficult to switch a huge train, uh, just like that, you know?
Right.
So.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, Patrick, you, you, you're all-electric. Um, what's the name of the company that you use that gives you bulk purchasing?
Uh, that's Greenworks.
Greenworks. Oh, okay.
Yeah, they have a commercial lineup of equipment, so they are, uh, rapidly, uh, growing their, their lineup, um, to, uh, now that they're, they're setting up with commercial mowers, uh, commercial-sized blowers and, and stuff like that.
So are you able to do this in the fall as well?
Um, I, I did last fall and, uh, with success, um, and, and, and some learning curves, uh, the way I, I was able to price things out. Um, I was undercutting myself at times. Um, but I'm also a new business, so that's typical. Um, it was, uh, more laborsome and last year I worked by myself. This year I have an employee and I, I plan to have many more employees. So it's going to be where I lean on a little bit of labor and a little bit of higher pricing and, um, and a little bit of upfront cost when I make investment purchases. So leaning on those things, it, it definitely can work. Um, I just think these, these bigger companies that have spoke already this evening, they're concerned about making the switch so fast, but the way you've got it outlined is, uh, that you're, you're not really outlawing everything until 2024. And I think that between now and 2024, I expect to see a great increase and, and the power of the equipment and a great reduction in the price of batteries. That's my insight for the next few years.
That, that's great. Thank you so much, Patrick. That's, that's good input.
Excuse me, Patrick, Patrick, what's the name of your, your company? Is it?
Uh, Senior Lawn Care.
Okay. So you are, you're one of the ones on our list on the website then, okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you, Patrick.
Anything else?
Can I add a comment? Yeah, just to your, your point, Patrick, um, you know, on the committee, we have tried to take a holistic, you know, approach to this issue. So we actually have spent time looking into setting up, you know, discounted bulk purchasing for landscapers. And the, the thinking was that during this transition period, during the three years, we could work on setting up programs. Um, it's not clear what the exact shape of that program would be, whether it would be supported at the town level or at the state level. But I think it's pretty clear from the different distributors that there are opportunities definitely to set up discounted bulk purchasing, and we have been looking into that, you know, as part of our efforts on, on the committee.
Yeah, I think that's definitely necessary.
Okay, great. Thanks so much, Patrick. Appreciate the input. Okay, have a good night.
You as well.
So we have more time. If other people would like to just have a free discussion, raise your hand and we can, we can move you over. This is kind of an awkward setup because with this kind of Zoom meeting, we can't just, people can't just talk. We have to move you into the panel for you to talk. But if anyone would like to respond to anything that's been said, raise your hand and we can bring you over. But while we're waiting, let me just mention, um, the next meeting, a week from tomorrow, is kind of set in stone because it's, we've already sent out invitations to almost sixty people. The town has posted it and so on. Uh, I can raise with the committee, the committee is all here with one exception. We can discuss further meetings at later dates if that will be helpful, but I think we should make use of the meeting we've got. Uh, we've had two very different discussions to, tonight. One is about seasonal limits, which I think we can probably get some, make some progress on much more quickly. And the others on the, on the transition to electric. So if you can get ideas lined up for either of those for next week, we can make some progress. And even if we have to go on longer with another meeting at a later date.
Does anybody else, um, in the list? There's, there's a few people still there. Anybody else want to participate?
So fourteen people. I just thought, Vicky, you look like you wanted to weigh in on something. No? Okay.
I mean, I can add a comment to one point that came up, I guess, repeatedly about, um, the outreach efforts that we did. Um, we, we didn't mention the, the survey that we sent out to the residents, which I believe was completed to about four thousand, by about four thousand residents, you know, which was supportive of, you know, the effort to, to phase out, you know, gas-powered leaf blowers.
We could, uh, post the results. We should probably post the results of that because someone using chat, I don't remember who it was, sent a message saying, do you have, that they, that person was proposing a survey. So we could, we could post those results on our page somehow. Uh, we'll look into that after the, you know, after the meeting, putting that up. But the bottom line was that there was, um, less agreement about what to do, but there was, uh, though there was a lot of agreement about corrective steps as well, but there was very, very widespread agreement that the noise is bothersome. It's a problem, but we have the actual statistics for that that we can, we can share.
All right. If, if nobody else wants to join, uh, one last chance. You're welcome to join next week. The next meeting where you're more than welcome to attend is May fifth at seven PM.
Um, so it's a different link, so be sure to go back to either the site I showed you or the email, if you got the email, because there's a separate link for each meeting.
Right. And, and feel free to submit information, um, written information by the website as well.
And also, let me add, please feel free to distribute this information to anybody you think should be involved. I mean, we really struggled with this because the, this, I think six different sources we had included people who weren't doing landscaping work. They included people with no working phone numbers who were on an old list. It was really very difficult for us. So if you think we missed some people, if you talk to people who are working in Lexington and they said they haven't heard about it, please give them this information. Help us, help us, uh, get the word out to other people who might want to weigh in with ideas.
Um, I, I'd like to also get some ideas from the landscapers of if they could pick a perfect date, a perfect amount of time to do their research and be ready to give us specific things that they would like to see the bylaw address. Tell us what that date would be. Three months from now, two months from now, Christmas, whatever seems like it would give you enough time, tell us, so we can consider how to proceed.
I mean, we do have to balance that the people who are angry on the other side and want relief um, are annoyed or angry every time we, we delay for six months. And, you know, if we go beyond, if we go, if we don't have a revision to submit by roughly July fourth, then we're going to get bumped for, for another six months. And that's going to leave people who have been asking for a change annoyed. So we'd like to move quickly enough if we can, but we also want to give you a chance to, you know, to talk and, and get your ideas together. Okay, I guess if no one else wants to speak, we can adjourn. Last chance, if anyone would like to drop, someone just, I'll move him over. Someone just raised a hand. This is a different Bob. I don't know who it is.
Bob, can you hear us?
Now, we can't hear you even though you're not muted. Ah, there we are. We can at least see you. You're muted, though.
Unmute, unmute.
Bob, you're on mute.
Bob, we can't hear you because you're muted.
We can see you.
There you go.
Hi.
I think when you guys remove people from talking, they get removed from the meeting. I don't know if you're aware of that. Well, it was for me on two different computers.
I'm sorry. That's not what we thought we were told.
Yeah, Dan, there's a different button. It's, it's changed back to attendee.
Oh, my, oh, my, oh, my.
So I think it would happen to a bunch of people because they called me, but I went to another computer and I was able to listen.
Oh, that's awful.
Yeah, because, yeah, because once you do that, they can't get back in the meeting, I guess.
When you guys asked me to speak, I could, I could see you and, and I'm saying, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, but I couldn't get on, so I went on my computer, which I could hear you, but doesn't have a camera or, or volume.
All right, well, we'll, we'll have to send an email back out to everybody. We're novices at this, Bob. We've always been on the other side of this.
Listen, I think it's an honest mistake. You don't have to apologize. I was, as, as I was sitting there, um, Erica, can you grab that paper in my office, please? I came up with a suggestion and I think it's, uh, Stu who keeps asking, what can you do for a timeline? I have an answer. I have an answer for you.
Okay.
So it sounds like everybody's saying the same thing, right? We're, we're all busy. We, you guys see us out there at five, six o'clock at night. I, I had to come home early to get on this meeting, right? And, and it was at seven o'clock, right? It's dark. Some of us coming home at dark, you know? So I, I was thinking about it as he kept asking everybody. I could hear it. And, and then what, what people have been saying, and I didn't catch much of this meeting, so I think a lot of people probably are going to reach out and say, I was shut off afterward, so I don't even know what happened. So, um, real quick, one thing you had said, Dan, do you think a four-stroke engine would be, um, you know, quieter? That a four-stroke engine is not quieter than a two-stroke engine. It's just as loud. And one of the things that I looked into, and I don't want to go back into a debate on this, but I have a suggestion, is I've, I've called many of the, uh, electric companies because, you know, everybody panicked when this thing came out. But I called a lot of the electric companies. I called the manufacturer of Eco Quiet, I think it is, or Eco something or other. And, um, he's not the manufacturer, the distributor, and the, their own distributor said, we sell to the city of Manhattan, New York City municipality, but, but other than that, the, the, they just don't work. And, you know, they, even the town of Lexington, I believe, and I'll, I, I don't want to speak out of school, has tried it and it doesn't work. They, they, they did this for a long time and it, it just wasn't working for them. So they went back to other things, you know, other, um, regular backpack blowers. But I think, I believe you that this was an honest mistake, so I think we're going to probably have to revisit this. But here's my suggestion, and I, I know this is going to probably not make you happy, but as I listened to everybody and I, and I watched this whole process play out, I got cut off. I know Rick DeAngelis got cut off. Um, I'm sure Mike Keegan did. Chris Stratford is cut off. I think he's listening on his phone, but he can't talk to you. So I, I think everybody that has spoken, when you adjourn them from the meeting, they got shut off. And if they didn't have another, they didn't have a computer to go to, then they were, so they haven't heard the meeting. But let me ask you this and tell me if you think this makes sense, right? And, and this is purely a suggestion, and I wouldn't have thought of this yesterday because I wouldn't have known this yesterday. As I came home tonight to become on this meeting, Governor Baker announced that all face masks are able to be lifted in public and that they're raising the restrictions on public gatherings to two hundred and fifty people inside. And, you know, two hundred people, uh, two hundred and fifty people outside and two hundred people inside. Let me ask you this and tell me if it makes sense. We've waited, I mean, you guys have been working on this for ten years because I look back on your minutes on the NAC and there's talk about this all the way back to two thousand and eleven. And while everybody used to think, you know, oh, they're talking about banning blowers. Yeah, they do that every year. They're not going to do it. You know, and now it's coming closer and, and it's, it's scaring a lot of people. And, and you've heard that tonight from all the people that have spoke. Let me ask you. And, and I know in one of the meetings you said, oh, I thought this was going to be done and I was going to enjoy my summer. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen, but let me ask you this, if this makes sense, and I think anybody who's listening now on the landscape side would agree, and it really is fair for both sides. Not only is it fair for the proponents of it, but also the opponents of it. And what I'm suggesting is this, it's been going on for ten years, right? What if we just waited until, say, next fall? And I realize that's a long time away and possibly even into next summer, right? Which goes through all this year and you're losing all the time. I understand that. But at that point, and this is my point, at that point, most likely, we're going to be, the pandemic is going to be behind us. And clearly tonight, technology didn't work in our favor because a lot of people got cut off afterwards and haven't been able to hear this. So you know what the next situation is going to be. They're all going to say, well, I didn't get to hear it and well, this next week. Okay, fine. But again, there's a lot of people logged on. They're listening. Some people aren't talking, but you know who we're missing at this forum? Is the residents of Lexington. So I never was a town meeting member. I followed politics in Lexington through the Minuteman. And as, uh, Chris Stratford said, there's been no social media. There's been no, um, medium to reach out to the residents who are ultimately going to voice their opinion. And as I said earlier, I've talked to a lot of people that had no clue that this was happening and they were upset about it. They said, oh, crying out loud, what are they going to think of next? Okay, that's a person not in favor of it. But I've talked to people that said, oh, you know, I, I kind of like that idea. I think that, that would be good. Okay, well, do you understand what that's going to do? And when you explain it to them, say, no, I don't like it now. Okay, fine. That's another side. What if we waited until this pandemic was behind us and we're, we're already a year into it and we could get a gathering of people in the town hall, if that's even possible? I don't know. Maybe I'm getting way ahead of myself and you could have two hundred residents or three, I don't know how many people fit in it, in a hall if you have a, a debate. Hasn't that happened before with other?
Three hundred.
Three hundred? So am I, I don't know because I've never actually been in one of them. But has that happened before with other types of issues? Never?
Uh, well, speaking as a town meeting member, uh, we did have it happen once and, and that was over the gun question. We did have it happen once and and that was over the gun question and it was. Huge, but I don't think there's as much passion behind it, behind this issue.
So Bob, can I throw one thing in and then ask you a question?
Sure.
So because we screwed up with the accidentally moving people out of the meeting, you missed discussion of public outreach. It's been a lot. There's a survey that we've gone to, I think, eight community groups. Uh, we did social media. So the, we did a lot of outreach. We didn't do a lot of outreach landscaping, because that was our mistake, but we did do a lot of public outreach. But let me ask you a question. Just if if you want to say we want to hold off on the stuff that's really painful to us, which is. Transitioning to electric equipment, would you be willing to support having something sooner that would impose seasonal limits?
Well, as I said earlier, I don't think there's any concession necessary at this time, but you ask about season limits. Just like the town landfill, I don't know if you're, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
So they used to allow contractors to go in there seven days a week. They restricted us there. Then they restricted us on Saturdays, which we work every Saturday. You know, and we we don't have a choice on that, really. Um, but. We've always bent over backwards to accommodate what has been thrown at us. And I don't think seasonal limits would be something that people couldn't accommodate. Um, I think, I I believe that you think you understand a lot of what is going on and. And all of you do. I don't, I don't know who, uh, is Jack up there in the corner? I don't. So I don't, I think that you, I think you think you understand what we actually do, but you don't. You know what would be helpful? Come ride with us sometime, as Deval Patrick said, and spend a week with us and you'll understand what we do and how it goes. And I think you would have a much, much better picture. Kind of shadow us, you know, and and watch what happens and you would probably change your own opinion on it. And you would probably have, um, I don't want to say respect because I don't think you disrespect us. I think it's just you would have a different opinion on it. I think that we could accommodate a um, some kind of seasonal adjustment. But one thing that was in the original proposal, and I heard there was a second proposal drafted, but I haven't seen it. Was you guys suggested um October fifteenth to December first. Is that correct?
Uh, I honestly don't know, but Bob, this may be also after we moved, accidentally moved you out. Um, I think it was when we were talking with maybe in Chris Crudenell, but with someone who mentioned this, I told him. You're the ones who know what seasonal limits will make sense. All right, we picked ours by looking at other towns, but if a group of you come and say you've got the wrong dates. Then tell us, change, okay, tell us, give us.
Okay, that's easy, right? So for instance, I believe it was October uh fif, was it October fifteenth or October first?
I'll have to look it up.
I think it was the.
What do you think it should be, Bob?
Or the first, but you shut, I know you shut it down on December first. So.
What do you think it should be?
On, I think it should be all the way until Christmas because usually we're done by Christmas. And if we're not, you know, your windows are closed anyway, and if we come out in the January thaw to make somebody happy. No one's going to be really that, and hardly half, more than eighty percent of the landscapers don't do that. I was out there in January this year and people were happy to see me. They were grateful. Because we had an, uh, not an early snow, but we had that October storm. You know, leaves aren't falling on October fifteenth or October tenth. But if we have a early snowstorm in November, like Thanksgiving, and then and or a December first. And it melts, you know, seven days later, we're out of business according to you, especially when the full ban comes in.
So you're looking at November, November one to Christmas?
I would say, I would say when the leaves start falling, whenever that is. I don't think you need to put a date on the beginning, but I think you could put Christmas as an end date, and I don't think anybody would be happy unhappy with that. Because most people are done at at Christmas.
What about springtime?
Springtime is different. So you have a, um, I can't remember the dates. Do you, do you know what the dates are or you don't remember?
I I can look it up if you want. Give me a second.
I think it was April third thirty first, if there's a thirty one, thirty days of.
Here's the most recent version one. It is, um.
I think it was April thirty.
Uh, at the following, it is, spring is March fifteenth to April thirtieth. And then fall, yeah, fall was October uh first to December first, and you're saying that's just too early to be sensible.
Okay, so March fifteenth, right? We we generally have, uh, we could get a big snowstorm on March fifteenth. We've had ten inches, fifteen inches of snow. March fifteenth is a great date to start, but it's not a guarantee. And this year we started on the seventeenth, so it has been a little bit of a jump. But generally, our start date is like April one. And if we're out there early, that's fine. I don't think we need to put a start date, but you closed it off on April thirtieth. That's next week, and we're not even halfway through what we have to do. And I think anybody listening in the in the landscaping uh group would tell you that they go right into June. You know, because we're still doing cleanups and mulch. I think June or mid-June or June tenth. Um, would be a good time because I think by then, everybody is pretty much done with their cleanups. And if they're not, it's so few and far between that I don't think you're going to hear a lot of complaints about it, where the rogue guy doing a quick cleanup or something. You know, a lot of times we'll get people that will call me on June twenty fifth and say, I want a spring cleanup. I'm not kidding you.
They've been asleep all day.
Well, just think of a person that sold the house, right, and and decided they weren't going to do it. And then they bought it, but didn't move in because they were having construction. Then they came in. What are we supposed to do then? Those are things that you guys don't think about, and I'm not blaming you for being uh naive about it, but that's just the fact, you know? They don't, you don't understand it. Like I said, if you guys want to jump in a truck, you know, with me, I'll take you around for a few days and and go to every single job site I got. And you'll, you'll have a different perspective on it because it is not what you think, and it probably isn't what most people think. And, you know, half the time it isn't what employees think. They come to work and they, after one or two days, they go, this is ridiculous. I'm not doing this anymore.
So I think just as a practical matter, Bob, if if we give town council a proposal for longer uh spring and fall cleanup periods. They will insist on a start date. They won't say that you don't need a start date. They will say if it's in the law, it's kind of a start date and an end date. So we will need to have one, and if March fifteenth is is not the right one, we'll change it, but we we can't just say it has to stop by a certain time. We have. We have to save windows, so you know, give it some work. I'll talk to other people, but come back.
Even March first to June fifteenth.
I have a question for Bob.
Go ahead.
What are the incentives? If suppose we made it December twenty fifth. What are the landscapers' incentives to stop, to finish up as early as possible? I'm sure there are, but what are they?
There are none. They don't need them. They want to be done by then, and if they're not done by then, it's only because weather permitted them. Weather in inhibit them or prohibited them from doing it. Nobody wants to be out there after December twenty fifth. It's like, you know.
Now, that wasn't really my question. My question was. Do your men go back to Central America? Do your, is is there something that makes you want to compress it into a shorter period of time?
Well, the longer we keep them out there, the more it costs us, right? So I I know a lot of guys that that will stop. I know some guys, not a lot, but a few that stop on like December fifth. And even if the leaves are still out and they haven't finished their cleanup, if they go through one or two times, they're done. See you in the spring. You know, I got people that say, are you coming back? Like, well, we're we're trying to, but the snow, you know, dropped, we've had three days of rain. And they they're angry if we don't show up. And then I I I keep people year round. A lot of people don't. Um, because they they can't. I mean, it's it's a very cost, you know, what do you, what does a landscaper do in the winter? You know, we shovel snow. We used to do firewood. That doesn't pay anymore because the labor rates are too high. You know, we we do other things to keep busy. I have guys that do painting, you know, and. Actually, to be quite honest with you, you know, from an owner's perspective, I work so many hours in a year. I am looking forward to that seventy-five day break. And it's not a break for me. I don't put a lock, a padlock on the door and go to Florida, right? I I am exhausted at the end of, at the end of the day. Okay, I'm leaving on Friday to go to a cheerleading competition for my daughter down at Disney World. You know what's going to happen? I'm going to work so hard to get those four days off. I'm going to get there on Friday night and do a face plant into a pillow, and I'll be lucky to see her competition. And I'll come back just as tired because I'm going to be, you know, up for two days going busy running around, and then I'll come back and I'll be behind the eight ball. Nobody, nobody takes the winter off. It's not like we're, you know, we we always stay busy. Landscapers find something else to do. But to keep a big crew on, the 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 incentive to get done early is exactly what you said. Get, get the guys off the payroll. I keep myself probably ten people on all year long, and it's expensive. And there's not one drop of income unless it snows. And and many, many landscapers, you know, residentially, I don't know, you probably have encountered it, but, you know. We do commercial and I don't do residential snowplow. I do all commercial. And some of my commercial snow plowing is contracted, right? In other words, if we get a hundred inches of snow or we get two inches of snow, I get the same amount of money. So sometimes you can have a big year. I structure it so that. A percentage of it is contracted and a percentage of it is um by the inch. And so no matter what happens, I always have some kind of an income. Many of these corporations and condos like that because they want a fixed budget to work with. Because you could get, if that year came at a hundred and twelve inches, they they blow their budget for three years. I mean, you could spend three or four years of of budget, and most people, like the town itself, doesn't know how to budget for snow. Town of Lexington got really smart over the last, you know, ten years or even fifteen years. Because there was always a small number, right? And then they would take from the slush fund, right? But now they actually do it realistically and and they got smart about it. I don't follow.
Bob, there's a state law involved that snow removal is the only thing that they're allowed to budget in arrears. The next year can pay for the previous year. It's the only thing in the whole budget.
Yeah, and is, does that, so does that make sense? I mean, they can't, they can't tell what's going to happen. It's the only variable, right? People don't like variables, as in that case of uh, we got a hundred and twelve inches. There was people, you know, crying, we blew our budget. We don't have any more money. I can't help it. I'm not the one making it snow, you know? But from a standpoint of, from a standpoint of working in the winter. Um, you know. Because of the way things are now, things are so expensive. It used to be the norm twenty years ago where landscapers disappeared after the first snow. And you you keep a few on to shovel or plow, but they were gone until March or whenever the first good weather was. Today, today's employee demands that you provide them with year-round work. And there's such a short, a small um group of people that we're sourcing. Everybody is trying to get the same people, the restaurants, the retailers, everybody is trying to go after that same pool of laborers. And then there's only so many. There's five thousand people bidding for one hundred people. And I'm sure that you guys all are in business of some sort, or you have been in business. And, you know, this labor shortage is literally killing us, killing us. And and I I can't tell you what you have, if you jaw would drop if you knew what, how much the cost of labor has gone up. And it's not, it's not, not everybody, it's, I'm sure you're feeling it as a consumer, but it's not. Some people are, can't eat it. You can't eat it. Mi- minimum wage went up fifteen, uh, to, is going to go up to fifteen dollars an hour by twenty twenty four, I think. Is it two, three, maybe the end of twenty twenty three? I think it's thirteen fifty now, and it goes to fourteen twenty five and then fifteen. So twenty twenty three, so next year on January one, it goes up to fourteen and a quarter. After that, it goes up to fifteen. And anybody uh above that, if they're already above minimum wage, which we don't pay minimum wage because nobody's going to do this kind of work for that. So the guy at sixteen or seventeen gets pushed up. The guy at eighteen gets pushed up along, because the guy at fifteen said, well, I got fifteen. The guy at sixteen says, I want seventeen. Seventeen goes to eighteen and it stops at like twenty. Right? And everybody at twenty says, well, I'm happy where I'm at. I'm not going to open my mouth because I may not. But he could do anything he wants, really. He could write his ticket because where are you going to go? You 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 have no choice. They, they don't, some of them, they don't ask for more money because they are greedy. They ask for more money because it's a necessity. They're feeling, they're feeling the pinch of the economy. And, you know, they buy their food from the same place you guys do. They buy their gasoline from the same place you guys do. Except they're doing it on fifteen bucks an hour. Fifteen bucks an hour or minimum wage wasn't meant to feed a family of five, right? And put and 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 have a house over, a roof over your head, but that's what a lot of these people are doing. And we do, we work ten, twelve, thirteen hours a day. We work Saturdays, we work Sunday. If if it rains for three days on Thursday and Friday and Saturday, we go out on Sunday. And if, and there's, you know, I used to work Easter Sunday every year, sweeping parking lots until everybody changed over to salt. I was one of the first persons to do it. And and I don't do it anymore because I don't have to because we use salt and there's no more sand to sweep. But, you know, I think my original. With the, to answer your question in short, there is, there is no need to put an incentive. You don't need to put a carrot in front of us. We will get it done as fast as we want. We just, as we can, but um, the weather is our governor, right? We we can only go as, there's only so many hours in a day. There's only so many amounts of people we have. And we get it done as quick as we can. And then when we're done, we're not doing anything else. We're we're off doing something else, painting or or, you know, maintaining equipment. We're certainly not out in the community making noise. Um, I think to my original point, if we waited until, say, next, like like a year from this fall, when pandemic is behind us. And we can assemble three hundred people, or maybe you wouldn't, maybe we'd have to rent um the Lexington High School. Because that's how many people are going to come out for this, I think. I I believe that you're not going to have two or three hundred people. If you, and I I I'm not saying you didn't use the medium of um newsprint or paper or social media. I'm saying that the residents, I don't think know about it. At least any resident I've talked to in the last two weeks and have mentioned it to a handful, they weren't aware of it. Some people said, yeah, I heard about that, but they really didn't follow it. I think if it was put on the front page of the Minuteman or the Colonial Times, as um somebody said. And you said, we're going to have an open um, you know, meeting at the town hall on this date. And if you want to speak, show up. I would be surprised if if we didn't get more than five hundred to a thousand people.
Okay, Bob, can I?
And the reason I say that is simply this. I've, I've only talked to maybe fifteen people, twenty people. And out of those fifteen or twenty people, five of them, I didn't even know. I just went to do estimates for them this week. And I mentioned it to them, just to see what what they said. And they all, and two or three of them out of those five said, what can I do to help? Because this is not, this is not good.
Okay, Bob, thanks, thanks so much. We want to make sure we've got time. We've got ten minutes left, whether anybody else has input. But, you know, we look forward to, you know, talking to you again, that's for sure. Because, you know, I think your ideas in terms of, you know, timing and and so forth are are very good, so. Um, so thanks a lot and much, you know, much appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys. Excuse me?
I was just going to say, apologies again for our screwing up with the controls. I I want to do committee business now, which is.
I don't think, I don't think you did it on purpose by any stretch.
But it's, I'm sure it's still aggravated people. Uh, just, I want the committees to to agree that I should go, can go ahead and email the entire list, explaining what happened and so on. So they don't think we deliberately cut them off.
Absolutely.
Agree.
That happened. I mean, it happened to me and a couple of other people, so I'm I'm pretty sure it happened.
No, I think it did because I I remember commenting, what's happening to our list of attendees? It's getting smaller. So we just, this is literally the first time, Bob, we've, we've been on this side of the webinar and we just misunderstood the instructions.
So that's what, that's what I suggested, the in-person thing, you know? I mean, I know you guys are hot to trot to get it done. And and, you know, I'm sure that there's a lot of people that want to delay, 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 right? But, you know. I think we're talking, you and I and and the landscapers are talking, which is important. But I also think, and I don't know if anybody mentioned it because it wasn't on the air, the residents, I think, should have a voice in it. And and they will have a voice when town meeting comes, but I think you're going to see. I would think you would see much more opposition when they realize the consequences of of some of this. And, you know, today we worked in your neighborhood, Ricky. Did you know we were there?
Oh, yes, I could hear it.
We did.
Through the glass.
We did four houses right next to you. We're done now. We don't have to go there anymore, you know?
So we'll try, I think what we should do next time is try to break this into chunks and see if we can. So we'll try, I think what we should do next time is try to break this into chunks and see if we can get progress on specific pieces. So the seasonal limits is one, then Chris Krugnell, I think it was, or someone, I don't wanna put words in, I may be confused by who it was. Raised the issue of towns that um, limit the number of units per property, that wasn't Chris, it was someone else. But these are things, specific decisions that we can make once we get more feedback.
The one that. Unit, meaning backpack blowers?
Yeah, so for, so for instance, uh, Brookline, Arlington.
Newton.
And I think Newton, limit the number of of blowers you can take out to a piece of property at one time, that you can operate at one time.
Well, that was, that was brought up earlier and I made a note of that. And 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 they said, well, what if we were to space out, you know, separate or put three pieces on a property? So I, you know, I could use, you know, Vicky doesn't have, I could use her as an example, but. You know, any, any house for that matter, but I'll use Vicky's yard, she has a giant yard, right? But she has a lot of evergreen, so there's not a lot of leaves. When you space things out with a blower, right? And you try to move the massive amount of leaves in some of these yards that, like Shade Street. Shade Street's called Shade Street for a reason, there's a lot of trees and leaves there, right? And when you have to start moving that massive leaves across the yard, you separate, when you split everybody up. You've just lost your power, so we might have seven to ten guys in a line, which you don't want. But that's, this thing moves like a wet mattress going across the lawn, right?
That's not in our proposal, but it's Arlington, Cambridge and Brookline that have a limitation on how many can be used at the same time.
I mean, the reason it's relevant is that. Um, you know, as as Vicky pointed out, even one commercial grade GLB is is in violation of law, when you put four or five of them together. It's way, way over, I mean, in my neighborhood, Bob, I have three times at the street measured over ninety-five decibels. At the street, that's under the operator's ear.
Right. Do you know that I looked into buying back um, battery-powered blowers? And the decibel rating isn't really much lower, they're coming in at seventy-eight decibels. Some of them, but then then it's like trying to push it with a hairdryer, it's it's useless, they, like I said, they don't make anything right now. That serves our purpose, but even the ones that they make are two decibels lower. And I would challenge you to listen to mine and that one and see if you could hear it with your, with the human ear, I don't think you can.
Bob, we we've had our lawn cleaned with electric blowers for two years running and for part of the time, I actually didn't even know they were there. I didn't know, literally, I had to walk out to get them out and I thought, damn, there's a leaf blower in my front yard.
I I I'm only saying, I'm only telling you what the manufacturer states is the decibels. You go online and you you get an electric powered and they rate them at seventy-eight decibels.
Right, so Bob, one thing, just a technical note, a technical note, because we've gone through some of this stuff. When you go on to the manufacturer sites, there are two different numbers that they sometimes use. The one that we're using is decibels at fifty feet, what some of them have is decibels at the operator's ear. And the reason they do that is because that's what's relevant to federal noise control requirements, OSHA requirements. So uh, Stu found some, for instance, that were electric and very high, but they were at the operator's ear. Um, what Newton and Brookline have imposed is limits at fifty feet. So that's, you know, that's, those are much, much, much lower than what it is at your, but we need to wrap up, I'm afraid. Uh, this, this has really been helpful, Bob, I hope you can bring back, you know, come back and bring concrete ideas and we'll gradually get this hammered out.
What do you think about the open meeting a da- a year down the road?
I think we need to discuss it as a committee, frankly. Um, and we sort of promised that we would allocate these two meetings to nothing but hearing from you guys. And not doing any other committee business, but um, we can bring it, we'll bring it up at another regular meeting later on and talk about it. I mean, we're gonna, Bob, we're gonna need meetings just to digest everything that's said at these meetings, right? Because we can't privately.
I extend an invitation to you to jump in my truck anytime. Spend a week with me or even a day, I bet you would run and take a week, it would take a couple of days or a day. And you would be, you'd be amazed at at how we move and 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 know what we can do and. You know, I would even extend this invitation to you. I'll go out and buy a whole bunch of electric blowers, I'm sure people would, you know, help fund it. And we'll try it on a lawn in the fall, well, we really not much to, like in the summertime, you're blowing sand and little pieces of grass, that's nothing. It's the leaf is really the hard part, you know? So each year they come out with more and more powerful things and, you know, it's hard to really, you know, right now you could do it with a cleanup, but cleanups are, you know, halfway through. But you'd be surprised at how much you can do with a backpack that we use now, a gas-powered backpack. And and, you know, what we do, uh, what we would be able to do with a um, with an electric-powered one, you know? Some of those backpack blowers only get an hour out of them, one hour.
I know that at full throttle, I know that.
Okay, Bob, thanks, thanks a ton, appreciate it and.
Chris, Chris wants to get in, can we say a few minutes late, let Chris back, get back in?
Sure.
Uh, promote to panelist. Yep, there is. Chris, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Hi, yeah, um, so I had the same issue as Bob and the rest of everybody, I I was kicked off right after I spoke. Um, is there a way you could guys could send, you said this is being recorded? I I didn't hear anything after I spoke, would you guys be able to post or email this session?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify because I I didn't hear a thing aside from Bob's most recent.
The town will do it and that's, you should do it through the town because. If I download it, there's no way for you to get it from my computer, the thing is enormous.
Got you, yep.
I I will write to uh, the person who does it and and um, uh, make sure it's kept on the server long enough for people to. To hear it, uh, and we will not screw up next time on the way we have.
No, it's 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 fine, I just, I wanted to double check so I can replay it and hear what people had to say.
So I'll send a note, the person who handles it is Kim Katzenbach. And I'll send a note to her tonight or tomorrow, telling her that we need to keep this one up. Uh, and it's accessible to people, okay?
Okay, we we'd be able to find that on the Lexington um.
I'll talk with her, yeah, I'll talk with her about where it is and I can.
Okay.
Follow up with an email telling you where to find the link.
Awesome, I appreciate that, thank you.
I'll send it to everybody who got the first email.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for the suggestion.
Thank you.
All right, well, I guess we should adjourn, it's nine o'clock, I will go ahead and send the two things that I mentioned, I'll send an apology to everyone and. I'll tell them that I'll follow up with the link of the recording. And uh. We'll just uh, see what happens next meeting, whether it calls for. Continuing with meetings spaced out, well, we may have to, or should we schedule? Another regular meeting, which of course would be open also, but schedule another open meeting when we can discuss. Some of these questions or should wait until after the next meeting to do that?
It might be helpful to have it sooner because we can, we can, you know, talk about the issue of when to have the next. When to have a final hearing and that kind of stuff and have some perhaps answers.
So we have a meeting next Wednesday with them.
Monday? Monday evening, maybe?
Before the second meeting?
Yeah.
I can do that, uh, is there time enough today, yes, if I get the agenda into the town tomorrow. Then it will will make the deadline, so could you uh, make it, make it, Vicky?
What time, when?
Maybe seven to eight?
On?
Monday?
Monday from seven to eight AM?
No, no, no. So I'm an early riser, six fifteen, no, no.
Seven to eight, Monday night, yeah.
Can you do that?
So it's May, we're talking May third, seven. Yeah, I have a six, I have a six to seven, but I could do seven to eight.
All right, we can make it seven fifteen.
That that might help a little bit.
All right, let's make it seven fifteen, um, and I'll make it, um, I think we can make it short, I don't think we need two hours. But there is quite a bit that came up tonight that we ought to ought to discuss. Right, so I will.
You need a technical advisor, I think, more than any.
Well, we learned the hard way, so the option we used was remove, where we should have said, what's the other option?
I'm converted to a, converted to a attendee.
You use the cockpit eject button.
Well, I. About that, I wondered why the list was getting short. And that is, um, uh, so I need to do a note to Kim. Apology note. I need two agendas, one for Monday and one for Wednesday. All right, uh. Okay, I, it may be tomorrow afternoon by the time I get this done. Um, but I will do all those things, um.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Um, did you just see that Slack message?
Who sent, April sent it or is it to her?
Oh, that's a good question. Now I can't find it.
I think it was from, it was from her.
You from her.
So I can't find it, how did you find it, I'm so Slack illiterate here.
Uh, I just went on and noticed that I happened to be on committee business and she posted at the bottom of committee.
There is.
Business.
Okay, news dance, okay.
Uh, yeah, I find it hard, I don't know where to look often, so I sometimes use the search bar at the top, all right, so let's go ahead and adjourn. Um, I will do some of this uh, early tomorrow morning, but some may not get done until tomorrow afternoon, right? All right, thank you all.
And I, I think, I think this went very well, actually, despite the eject button, this went very well.
I agree.
I I was very pleased, I mean, it started off in a way that there's a lot of tension, but I think as it went on, people got more and more involved in actually discussing what we could do. And that's really the purpose of it is. And you know, the fact that people are now beginning to separate, well, there's this electric equipment stuff that we see is a really big deal and there's the seasonal stuff which we don't see is such a big deal. That's helpful.
And the the woman who spoke second was wonderful, I want her to be on every committee.
Yeah, she was um, poet, Lamachia.
Yeah, she she really said it out very calmly and and set a wonderful tone.
And yeah, that was my reaction, she's setting the right tone for the meeting, it really calmed everybody down, I think, come some people down anyway. So, yeah, I was pleased, I think it got better as it went along and we're now really having substantive discussions about options and that's the whole point.
Yeah, and the conversation with Bob Bernard, I mean, he thought I meant, we wanna give you incentives, what I was asking was, what are the natural incentives to stop earlier? Excuse me, because. If there is a natural incentive to stop earlier for them, then there's no bad. There's no, there's no big harm in making a late cutoff.
Right.
So that's something we should explore more fully.
Right, so I think that the, I think the winter one is more of that sort because the naturally occurring stopping point is gonna be snow.
Yeah, or and then trying to to finish up after a snow too.
This spring is more of an issue, I mean, having something that goes from April to the middle of June is not gonna satisfy the people who are upset about noise.
I think for a lot of people, it's sitting outside weather or using your pool weather. And if it's early enough in June, that that could still be okay, it's it's not usually.
I mean, I'm getting, I got complaints in the middle of the winter. Um, so I I think. What some, what some landscapers do, the guy we no longer hired, who was very noisy, did this and our electric guy does it now too, he didn't last year. Is they separate the two, they go through into all the cleanups and then they come back and do the mulching. And the mulching is, you know, it's not noiseless because they do use some blowers and stuff, but it's, the real noise is the cleanup. So if they do it that way, the way the um. New England scape does it that way every year, they still do because they're doing my next-door neighbor. Um, then the really noisy stuff is concentrated, you get it out of the way and then you go back and. And mulch and so on, one of the reasons that uh, I think one person does it is because then you see what's actually growing there, what's weeds, what is. So you know what to do with the beds. But I I think, you know, having, having uh. Uh, open season for GLBs into mid-June is just not gonna sit well with people. I think that's too much, but let's talk about that at our our meeting and let's get comments from other people, landscapers, not just Bob about.
We should ask, I wonder whether, I mean, he said if you if you can't finish up in in the winter. Then the spring cleanup has a heavy load, but I wonder, kinda curious, in in a more, in typical years, the spring cleanup is probably less heavy.
Yes, I think that's right, at least in in our neighborhood, that's right. Because the spring cleanup is miscellaneous debris, it's leaves that blew from somebody else's yard. Uh, the only time I've seen here, since I've been in Lexington, our neighbor and I sort of share all this stuff. A serious spring cleanup was this year when that windstorm brought down big chunks of trees. You know, we had trees that smashed up our garden fence and so we had to have wood hauled out and that sort of stuff, but usually it's in and out, it's very quick. The fall is when it's really.
Yeah.
You know, wet, heavy leaves, but again, let's get feedback from others about. What windows might make most sense for them. And then see what we can do, all right, we we really should have um. Should adjourn, I'm not, well, it's still recording, I was worried that the recording would stop, it's still going. Uh, but let me get busy on these things I need to do and um, I'll I'll post the Monday at seven fifteen.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you all.